This conference will now be recorded.
It's 5:30. Start the meeting. No call please.
Commissioner Ninger?
Here.
Commissioner Minnich?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
You're still in?
Here. Those who wish to stand for prayer in the place of the occasion. Mr. Jennings, will you pray?
Pray with me, please. Gracious God, we invite your presence into this place. Your wisdom, your sovereignty, we acknowledge. We ask that you would just bless us, let your wisdom influence our thoughts and our minds, point our hearts toward the greater good for our citizenry. We ask of special blessing on these volunteers in service, our city staff, that you would bless them, give them good health, and keep them safe. Bless our entire community. In the name of the most high God, we thank you, and amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Abations or delegations from the agenda?
So I believe we have two. The first one would be under City Manager Department as item number two. And that would be a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to sign the Pathways to Healthy Community Placemaking Pledge with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas in support of improvements to Levy Watson Park. And then the second one would be adding the Fire and Emergency Department. And then item number three would be a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter into agreement with the city of Winfield and Cali County Rural Fire Department District Number Six to provide fire protection services to Rural Fire District Number Six.
I can make a motion, we approve the amended agenda.
I'll second it.
We've moved and seconded, we approved the amended agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda according to the minute, approval of the June 6 regular meeting minutes as written.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, do you approve the consent agenda? Any further discussion? Got it? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, so new business. So City Manager Department, a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter an agreement with Tyler Technologies Incorporated to provide cloud-hosted software services on an annual basis, the first year amount not to exceed $115,926.
Good evening, Adam Mayor, Commissioners.
Mr. Willett?
Yes?
For our listening audience and our TV audience, would you please state your name?
I was getting to that. I am Matt Metzger, your IT manager. The information at hand, how this started, we've been a Tyler Technologies customer since August of 2011. We've been a municipality with them on their software system for the last 12 years. We're one of about 1,000 customers. I received a notice last year that they are transitioning their software to a cloud-hosted solution. That's very common in the IT industry right now, to not support various dozens of onsite, on-premise configurations. It's easier and less expensive, not only for them as a provider, but for us as a customer, as well as we have better IT security to have one common setup. That will be hosted on multiple data centers, so it will give us disaster recovery ability in case we have a tornado, flood, fire in this building, as well as lower overhead on myself or the staff that utilizes the system. What we're asking for is an initial first-year amount of roughly $116,000. The annual maintenance runs about $85,000. We currently pay about $52,000 to $55,000 now, but that does not include the hardware that has to be spent and the additional costs that are involved. And what happens is, is that has to be budgeted every three to four years. So that cost is split between multiple years, plus my time in administering that system and other softwares that are involved with that as well. What that would do is, the first year is higher because there's implementation charges, additional fees to get it off the ground and rolling. But year two and on, we're going to have a flat budget expenditure of, starting at $85,000. We typically will see maybe a 2%, 3% increase year after year, you know, that ugly I word that we use now. We call inflation, or additional software that needs to be implemented with the system. So instead of having a big expense year one, smaller expenses year two, three, possibly four, than a big expense again, instead of riding that roller coaster for this expenditure, we'll be looking at a flat budget. And that's easier on financed and myself to budget that same amount each year.
And this is a budgeted item for this year?
It is.
Does Police Department call this thing too? I mean, do you do their stuff too?
Yeah, yeah. So I, I help the Police Department with their software. They do, they do remote lookups for municipal court. They also do lookups for utility billing to see if someone is registered at that address, has utility information. It helps with public safety, as well as sometimes finding someone for contact, you know, like welfare checks, that sort of thing, so.
Matt, how does this help the continuity of business if we have a disaster or something goes wrong?
So, in, in a disaster recovery situation, the data is hosted in multiple data centers, whereas right now, on-premise, all of our information is downstairs in my office. So if we have power issues, lightning strike, it might be a few days for me to source that equipment and get us back up and running. The worst-case scenario, if we were out of the building, like due to a gas leak, major storm where we lost the, the fiber or the coaxial cable that connects to our building in the alley, we could actually have someone on a laptop with a standalone printer, take payments, cut payroll checks, get our information if we were in like a, a modal disaster situation where we were in a, in like an emergency response trailer.
Well, you know, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I said, is this going to give you some added space in your office too?
It will, it will. We'll have a little bit less overhead on electricity, heating and cooling, and, and now there's a team of experts managing that digital asset and that hardware versus me, myself and I, so.
Well, that, you know, this has been a long overdue because we've, we've focused on this thing for several years, you know, and the budget and stuff like that, and kind of pushed it down a road. And now it is time that we need to act on it. You know, it's a very important thing for the city and, and.
The world's going to cloud backup. I mean, it's not like, and that's just, everything's turning that way, so.
So, just for peace of mind of the citizenry, there are obviously like municipal utility activity. There are some interfaces, economic interfaces between the municipality and our citizenry. So there is, as you, and you mentioned again, reconciling addresses to inhabitants, that type of thing. Our, what's our confidence level? I'll ask it in that way, that there is no potential exposure to our citizenry in terms of anything that is confidential information or financial information in the citizens interacting with City Hall?
Right. On the cybersecurity front? Okay. Cybersecurity, they will have many more tools at their disposal for a data center than I have in just a, an individual firewall switch downstairs. And they'll also have the staff, the eyes, to be able to monitor that versus I might be on a project for Fire Department one day, or Police Department one day, or Water Utility one day, and I can't watch that, those logging tools on a 24/7, 24/7 basis, so.
So, so citizen information will be safe or safer?
I, my professional opinion is it would be safer.
Thank you.
Granted, it's in more physical locations, but those are locked down more securely than our City Hall basement.
So the, so in order to replicate that or duplicate that, it would cost us a lot more money than what we're talking about here, just to have that level of security as these multiple sites and the measures they've taken, okay, yeah, I just want to.
Thank you.
We're coming out of dinosaur age into the modern age now.
Well, yeah, getting closer. Matt, you've done a phenomenal job over the years of keeping everybody up and running. And you've researched this, I know, top to bottom and side to side, to make sure that we're protecting the information, but also having, everybody has access to it and it works for the betterment of the citizens. So thank you for that.
Thank you for allowing me to serve.
I have in, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, that being said.
There you go.
I was going to say, that being said. No, go ahead, go ahead, no sir.
Go ahead. No, I'll give you the honor.
No, I'm not, I'm not ready.
That being said, I make a motion, a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter agreement with Tyler Technology Incorporated to provide cloud-hosted software services on an annual basis with the first year amount not to exceed $115,926.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Never mind, go ahead. Can we have three seconds?
Well, I was going to mention, Matt was kind of feeling bad about, you know, the lonely IT guy not getting a lot of attention, and kind of feeling bad about it. But after the excitement that you guys have shown to him, to, I, you should feel really good about.
Yeah, I might, I might have grown another inch taller. Not too tall, I might fit the project.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thanks for what you do, man. I know it's a frustrating job at times, but.
Okay, item number two. A resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to sign the Pathways to Help the Community Placemaking Pledge with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas in support of improvements to Levy Watson Park.
So Nick's kind of heading this up, but he's at CPM class tonight, so I'll try to fill in. But I know you guys got a presentation Friday on, on this. And so this is just kind of the first step, just a, a commitment, a pledge of committing to the, to the project. There'll be a following at the next meeting. There'll probably be an ordinance on the tobacco-free for that park, or if we decide to spread that out more. But this is probably a $50,000 grant that will be used to do some playground equipment, some shade, and I think a sand volleyball, some other things like that.
Bathroom.
Bathroom.
Bathroom, too.
So.
There are possibility we could get one of those pickleball courts there.
I, I suppose I could be talking. I don't know what that looks like, but.
It might be worthwhile to at least do a cost comparison of, of putting something where there is nothing versus trying to refurb the courts that were discussed at Wilson Park. That might be beneficial, but, you know.
They were talking soccer and beach volleyball, right?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
And how much land is there?
Oh man, I don't know. There's a pretty, pretty good-sized area. I'm the Northwest Community.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know if there'd be room for a pickleball, but that'd be interesting.
And there's other, there's other parks that have quite a bit of space. I think the, the one where the school used to be, there's quite a bit of.
Spitting Park.
Park. There's, there's a couple of parks around that could be utilized, yeah.
There's quite a bit of greens for what they described, basically, using, looking at the footprint for the court existing at Wilson Park. There's still a lot of, quite a bit of green space on, on the actual park site. And we're talking a little bit about what's behind the community center, but across the street at the Watson, Levy Watson Park, there's still quite a bit of green space where you could possibly put.
South end, right?
North of. North of the community center, but on the south. And the other, the others, the other.
Yeah, because there's.
The other north end.
Yeah. There's not, there's not, I drove by there and there's not a lot of, it ends kind of at the playground equipment and the sidewalk and stuff, and then there's green grass, and then you go across the street.
But, yeah, so, so there's, there's, there's space to configure significant activity there.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea. I think it's something we should do, and I like the idea of trying to do something at Levy Watson Park. I know it was just used for the Juneteenth celebration, and I would imagine it's going to continue to be used for that and many other things. And it's nice to get some traffic back down there and get that park, you know, more user-friendly. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to sign the Pathways to Help the Community Placemaking Pledge with Blue Cross Blue Shield Kansas in support of improvements to Levy Watson Park.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Fire and Emergency Department. So item number three is a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter an agreement with the city of Winfield and Cali County Rural Fire District Number Six to provide fire protection services to Rural Fire District Number Six.
So Rural Fire District Number Six is further field, basically. So the city of Winfield and the city of Arkansas City, we share fire protection. Just a kind of the, the normal agreement that we've done over here. There's no changes. There's a, five mills that get split between the, the two cities or, and it's not less than $55,000 or five mills. It's the, it's the actual compensation that the two cities receive for providing that fire service. And Winfield passed, passed it last night at their meeting.
So, that mills, do they go in what, our budget, or do they go on the fire budget? Where's it, where do they go to?
Those dollars go into the fire department's budget.
Okay. Well, that's kind of a standard thing we do here in here.
Don't anybody say anything. It's all yours, Commissioner Jennings.
Well, with that being said, I would like to move that we authorize a resolution, excuse me, adopt a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter into an agreement with the city of Winfield and Cali, Cali Rural Fire District Number Six to provide fire protection services to Rural Fire District Number Six.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? So, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
You noticed, Matt, we were way more enthusiastic with your motion.
It had to wait for me to say something this time.
Items for discussion, city commissioners.
Well, I got one on the pickleball. I know you, you're, you're in on vacation, but are we trying to get expenses or figure out?
Yeah, Tony's, that was one of my updates. Tony's contacting the, the contractor in Wichita that does the resurfacing and having Matt give an actual proposal. He got a verbal for $25,000, but he'll actually have it come out. So that's, that's being scheduled to be done.
Okay, does that include with the windbreakers and all that, you know, that stuff around there too, or?
No, that was just, that, that was kind of the quote he got, just a resurface.
Okay.
So we'll have to get some additional quotes.
Have we looked, have we talked to the rec or USD 470 about some of their other potential tenants' courts they have? I know they've got some of the middle school that, I mean, if the middle school kids could use them some too during PE classes, I'm not saying they would, or they're wanting to, or, but my, I mean, I drove by the other day, I'm like, well, the school district could get involved. If they're going to use some, there's some right there off, what is that, C Street? You know, would they want in on that? I mean, I noticed there were some lights and there's some parking and some shade already there, but that would be one, or I don't know what the grand master plan is down at Parish Park one day, but there's.
Yeah, so all the other tennis courts right now are in the, in that agreement with the college, the high school, the city for the tennis group to do the maintenance rotation on them. Now, I recall when we, when we were renewing that agreement last year, talking about it, the courts there at the middle school that they talked about needing that can be completely redone. The concrete had been compromised, it was cracking, but maybe bulging a little bit, and they were talking about having to replace the concrete and that. So I don't know if there's an opportunity there or not.
Yeah, and I didn't know if the school district was even be interested in doing, I thought there may be another resource there available and do more than just.
I'm going to ask him, I'll ask him, I'll see what he says.
Yeah, and I just, that was just another option. I was saying, not Wilson Park. I'm not saying anywhere above this. That was just, if the school district would want to do pickleball courts outside, I know a lot of kids are playing, I know they do, I think some of them do it in the gym. They could go outside on a nice day, play on this course, maybe. They may say no, but.
I'll, I'll visit with them about it.
Couple of comments. I want to recognize or commendations to the Juneteenth Planning Commission. Commissioner Warren made reference to, I believe, no, Commissioner Rogers made reference to the event that was held this past weekend, Saturday, Sunday, and in closing on last night, the actual Juneteenth day. I thought it was, I thought it was more comprehensive than, than just a, a, a celebration time. They hosted a, it included hosting a housing, health, energy efficiency, fair housing type educational, with some pretty knowledgeable and informed presenters coming in. I thought the most fascinating one or beneficial one, in my opinion, was the gentleman who came and spoke about what I call the real citizen economic impact, which is the energy efficiency of the homes. And, and, and the, and basically talked us through generations of housing, pre-sixties, seventies to eighties, nineties, and, and going forward in terms of what codifications were, were required for, you know, whether that houses were built. And we heard a little bit also about things like the health of, the health impact on housing pre-1960s or nineteen, pre-1970s, and things like lead, lead-based paint. And one of the speakers talked about landlord rights. I didn't knock it over this time. Landlord rights and tenant rights, renter rights. And it was interesting because there was a little bit of a commentary that was an exhortation to the potential renters that if, you know, look for signs of things that would be indicate lead-based paint. And it says, if you move in, you find lead-based paint, then you probably want to contact your landlord and assist it. And left me wondering, left me wondering why we would not have some sort of governance over letting out. We heard from Tom Langer also talking about the impact of lead-based paints on health in the community. Why, why would, why would we allow, why would we, I would be, why would we be reactive in, in saying, move a family in with children, and then have them work with the landlord to get the lead-based paint out? Can't, whether, whether, I mean, that seems like something that we ought to be proactive with. And if we have like an inventory or a library of houses that might still fall into the heading of that, or perhaps we could start to say, hey, let's be proactive, and why don't we just address that before we let people move back into them and occupy those homes? Just back to me thinking out loud, anyway. But I felt like it was really been well done. The closing event last night was well-attended, and I think that the planning of that group, the committee, was, I think, if they took a step up in terms of what they offer the community, and it's become a really good draw, so I appreciate that. Second, I had to. The other was that I was contacted by a citizen made aware, unfortunately, it didn't fit my schedule. I usually am booked a few weeks out of here. But there was a, an offering of a social equity conference with an onsite attendance option and a virtual attendance option. Again, it didn't fit me either way, but I'm wondering when they do. Anybody go to that?
I did.
Share a little bit about?
What was a great conference for diversity, equity and inclusion. Lots of people from the East Coast were in attendance. We had quite a bit of dialogue about how to begin programs. I shared some with the city manager. So we're looking at maybe putting together a small group that we can work with, and then perhaps do some inclusion programs with our youth.
What's the likelihood? I know whenever they say virtual, then there's some digital record of the event. What's the likely? Like I said, they did offer registration for onsite, registration for virtual attendance. I wonder if there's something that we maybe, might be able to get.
I can, I can reach out to them.
And see where we could perhaps get pieces of it or all of it. Not the lunch, they won't give us lunch, but, but of the information that they had.
Yeah, there were, there were some that there's no recordings of, but for the most part, they had recordings of it.
Okay, that might be beneficial.
Okay, you likes, likes money, so I'm sure. I'll, I'll find out.
Thank you, sir.
Any other commissioners have anything? No comments from the audience?
We do not have any, you're on. I set up with the judge this morning.
Okay.
Okay. So, if you recall, a few weeks ago, we looked at some water rate analysis and needed to take a deeper dive. So we got, went out and got some proposals from companies that can take a deeper dive and, and look at. And so, next meeting, we'll bring a proposal to you guys on that. That for us. Talked about pickleball. I gave you guys a copy of the, a hard copy of the traffic study that was done for the school analysis. So I reached out to, to Dr. Ballard and department, and we'll, we'll try to set up a, a time for us to get together and kind of go over and, and look at what recommendations are made. And then at some point here, we'll kind of circle back around and see what, what we do want to do as a community, what we can afford to do. There's a lot of recommendations in there. A lot of them are, are paint, fairly easy things. There's some that require infrastructure to be put in if we want to go that direction, so. But it is a very comprehensive plan in that area. And, and then, so it took a long time to get, but hopefully we can get some good value out of it, so. So that's good reading there for you for next few weeks. The, the trail that we've been trying to hit on the KDOT schedule for a while, Chris just finished turning, he turned in the final signed plans. just finished turning, he turned in the final signed plans, and we received a, a letter from KDOT today that it has now been moved to 1023 as a let date for that. So we're looking at late, late fall now for the let date on that walking trail.
How long will it take to complete that?
I don't think it'll take long. I, I don't know what the, what it would look like, but fairly open areas along the canal there, and so I wouldn't think it would take long to get going once it's, once it's let. The 15th Street Bridge is moving right along, the decking is on there, they're putting decking panels on now, so that's looking good and moving.
What's the completion date on that one?
I'm not sure what the completion date is on that. I wouldn't think it'd be too far out now, the, the, their preformed decking panels and, and once they're on, that's, you know, they've got tied in, and it looked like they had some of the rail, guard rail stuff installed too, so should move pretty quick there. We, we're trying to take advantage of, of loan forgiveness on, on the green sand filter for the water plant, and we turned in a SRF application for that here just recently. So hopefully we'll hear something soon on as to whether that's approved that we can, and so that would really help our water plant increase capacity. And it's, the idea is to treat the magnesiums. And with, with additional green sand filter, even without the additional RO setup to go along with it, we can still increase our capacity out of the plant quite a bit, so.
How much, how much?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. I could get it for you, though. We talked about it with the engineer and they, there was, it was a, it was a pretty good, pretty sizable increase in production that we could get out of that, so. So fingers crossed that will be approved and allowed to apply for that. And then the, they've got two houses, pretty well complete on the CBDG housing grant, so 1328 West Oklahoma and 1507 North Tenth. Those are, round up now, there's a little bit of, we had a change order on the one house, they added gutter guards to help them with the, some gutter issues. And again, those are, one of the houses had some electrical upgrades, mostly siding, windows, some things like that, so it's, yeah.
One of the individuals is very happy to get new siding. They told me about it.
Good deal.
Let me go drive by and look at their new colored siding.
There's a, there's a few more houses in the queue, and we still got to get, we've got more people, we got to try to, you know, applicants, we've got to try to get in and get them processed, but, so.
Once you start, you know, then everybody will be wanting to do it.
Yeah, yeah, when you hear free, it's, we're all taught that's, it's too good to be true, it isn't true, but this is really a legit thing, so it'll, hopefully we can get a few more done, so that's all I had.
The old folks used to say that back before I was old folks, that when your palm of your hand itched, that meant money was coming in. And for some reason, I feel, I feel like I've got like about a $3 million itch that is going to yield some benefit maybe in the next six, 30 to 60 days, tiny days.
Let's hope so. Let's hope you're absolutely right. We'll take it.
Okay, we're, we're, yeah, I'm sorry, that's coy way of saying that we, we're still, we're still pending on, on the reconciling the, the loan to the SCK Health, is that?
Yeah, I did reach out to Jeff yesterday, actually. You know, we're working through budget items, and, and that, that does play a lot into what happens with next year's budget. And he did say they got a letter in the mail yesterday that, that it sounded like things were moving forward with the process of the tax credits that they're getting and stuff. So at this point, every, everything still seems positive on, on they're in for then receiving it and getting its payback, so.
And I tag along with that, Madam Mayor, with the, the rate of progress that happens here in local government, perhaps we should send you to Congress because perhaps we could get our federal government to be a little more responsive also and move at a quicker pace. So we don't have to wait months for them to decide they're going to.
Pay you.
Pay you, right, okay.
Anyone have anything else? I would entertain a motion.
Move.
Second.
With that being said.